And also announce that this meeting is being streamed live to the Carroll Media Center's YouTube channel, as well as the town's Facebook page. I will call the meeting's order at seven oh one, pushing seven oh two. Welcome everyone to the Sykesville Mayor and Town Council Meeting. Today is Monday, September ninth, twenty twenty four. Please stand for a pledge to the flag and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. In that moment of silence, please. Do we have anyone here, sir, for public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, thank you. And we'll skip right to our first item on our agenda, which happens to be our consent agenda. And I will ask if, first, if everyone has reviewed all sets, three sets of minutes from the July eighth, July twenty nine, August nineteen. And assuming that we all have, if there's anyone that plans to abstain from the consent agenda vote, please let me know now and then we will. Awesome, okay.
Well, there was one that, that was called while I was away and therefore I will have to abstain from that one. But the others that I saw were accurate, the other two I attended.
Do you recall, was that July eight?
Uh, that was twenty nine.
Twenty nine, okay.
I was in Hawaii at the time.
Very good, alright, well, I'll pull number twen- or number two from the consent agenda. Uh, that leaves one, three, and four, which includes the reappointment of Ken Johnson to the Planning Commission for his five-year term, which would expire July twenty twenty nine. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item number two?
Seven.
Thank you, Arden. Thank you, and all in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh... Oh, thank you, Al. That didn't scare me at all. Everyone, for the public certification, Al is zoomed into the meeting here this evening. Um, so if you hear a voice that you don't see a mouth moving, it's Councilman Grassley. Um, so that is a, uh... I thought it was everybody, right? An unanimous approval of the consent agenda. And now, uh, we will move, uh, hopefully to approve the minutes from the July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four meeting. Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from July twenty ninth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you, and do we have a second?
Second.
And that's seconded by Councilwoman Leo Keenan. First made motion by Council President Carter. All in favor of approval of the minutes from the twenty twenty nine, twenty twenty four meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
And anyone have a name? And are there any upstensions? And why is that, sir?
I was out of town.
Thank you so much, you were present for the meeting, appreciate it. Alright, we move on to the next item of business. Uh, we're already at number five, see how fast that went? That is unfinished business, and that is to consider, discuss, act upon the update at the station and the project thereof. Um, quick summary, I will provide the town's Lisi, Lessie, how do we pronounce that? Lessie, Lessie. Um, we'll be making presentation on the ongoing efforts of the station. This update will include estimated investment for building improvements, along with associated requests for town participation. And I will give a quick background about this long, and then I'll turn it over to Joe, um, to give us the high points of, uh, of what we're about to be considering this evening. Um, for the public certification, the town entered into a lease agreement with Stazion Incorporated. Um, I am bilingual this evening in December twenty twenty three for the purposes of reopening a restaurant in the Sykesville Historic Train Depot. Efforts have been ongoing to plan for the necessary upgrades to the structure, including receiving conceptual approval from the Maryland Historic Trust, which was required before moving forward with any structural changes to the protected structure. Um, per the lease agreement, the Lessie will give an update on the proposed improvements to receive formal council approval to proceed. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Joe before we speak further and have our presentation.
Yeah, just a little bit more of the background is obviously, as everybody remembers, we entered into a lease, uh, with Stazion back in December of last year. Actually, it was a little before December, that's when the lease took effect. Uh, obviously, all the due diligence that's been going on since we entered into that lease agreement has, uh, let's just say extended the timeline of a little bit more than anticipated, uh, just a smidge. Um, so, uh, obviously, they've been doing their due diligence, making sure they have everything, uh, that they need, uh, before they proceed with the construction efforts down at the station. So we thought this was a good time to, uh, at least provide counsel with that update. Plus, uh, given the amount of investment, which is significantly more, or at least anticipated to be significantly more than, uh, what we thought was going to be back in November of last year, um, they, uh, or there is going to be a request to counsel for our participation, since it is our building and obviously all these improvements stay with us regardless of who the ultimate tenant is there. Um, and then, uh, there is a few adjustments we'll make to the, um, to the lease agreement itself, uh, after we hear from the tenant.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate that. Um, I will, um, actually, before I ask Dante, I assume it's Dante that's going to be doing the presentation, before I ask him to join us, uh, this evening, just, um, hit one more high point regarding the, the, um, the money, uh, aspect, the financial aspect, again, for the town's edification, um, that, uh, that the Lessie will be including an overall cost estimate of the proposed improvements this evening. Um, and for reference, the FY twenty five budget does include a one hundred and twenty-five dollar, um, investment. I'm sorry, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar investment, uh, in the form of ARPA monies. And so, uh, that's something that, uh, will, is already in the budget and should we want to increase upon that, we do have some options we'll discuss later as to how to meet that, meet that if we choose to. Um, and there are three recommendations that, uh, that staff is making for the council this evening. Um, and I was thinking that for the sake of procedural, um, following what we're used to, we do have three motions that we should be, um, considering making. And I thought if we were to make those motions, at least the, like now, one at a time, um, they would then at least be on the table and propound the reason for this evening's presentation. And then, uh, following the presentation and any Q and A, we can, uh, debate and discuss and then, and then vote. So, right now, just be, I would refer, ask you all to refer to our staff report and those three motions that staff is recommending, and ask if there's anyone, uh, that wants to bring any of those forward.
Well, I'm sorry, I will just say this, because you can only consider one motion at a time.
Yes.
So, um, maybe I misunderstood what we had just talked about earlier. We, we probably should hear the presentation and at least get to that point.
Okay.
And then, and then the...
Okay, that's fine too, yeah, so, um, ex-nay that. And, uh, I'll ask Dante to come to the microphone. Thanks, Dante.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is my...
That's it, yeah.
Jack, dear friend, general contractor, architect of short air, is going to illustrate what we are proposing. But in my most basic way, in my nineteen ninety-six technology, I use notepad to create these, uh, summaries of expenses, so that might be a little easier. So if I can have everyone just take one and pass it down, that'd be helpful. What's that, yeah? That one's titled?
Platform.
Platform. The next one? Do the same with that. Show one for you.
That's it.
Seems like a final, wouldn't it?
Final.
I read that too.
Everyone has two currently?
Yes.
You know if you can do the same here, pardon? And then, this is actually a summary. You need that to the end. I'll wait till everybody has their papers. Jack, can we start off with, uh... What are you looking for? Can you tell me which one I want to start? Are you looking for either the freight room or the platform? Anyone, so I can draw everybody's attention to that page. Three D version preferably. Like Joe said, um, we're here to make the formal request to the council, to the town, based on the projected expenditures. Help with the cost of everything that will go towards the building, our building, your building, the town's building. These are expenses that will always improve, uh, the longevity, the strength, the integrity of the building. These are not quote-unquote "for" the business. What do you have for me by way of graphics, Jack? These is one probably to do without drawings would be the platform. Let's go to the platform removal. Is there one on that page? The platform, as you recall, is going to involve removing the flooring that's there. Removing all the awning and building concrete slab with hopefully reclaimed wood floors. Introducing windows instead of that plastic tarp. Doing away with the plastic top or tent and doing a structure with insulation. When you are in the platform, as required by MHT, we're not going to be supporting off of the building. Nothing is stressing the building, everything will always be separate. So we're introducing a post and beam system that runs parallel to the tracks. It'll be resting with that, also appeasing the MHT and not in any way stressing or resting upon that building. That's going to cause an ungodly amount of money. The windows alone are expensive. And the framing of it, the demoing of it, we're projecting that aspect of it without finishes. I mean, that's without all the trim, all the pretty light fixtures and everything else go with it. Somewhere around five hundred and forty thousand dollars, just for that. Okay? Anything for me to display that? Okay, apology accepted. Moving on to freight room. The freight room is the least costly of the endeavors. To remind everyone what's going on there, for accessibility purposes, for functionality, we will be dropping that floor and putting back, simply dropping it to the same level, using the same choices and dropping it lower. We have to introduce another egress when you first come in. We have to cut that block wall, so when you come in that way, it'll mirror that other egress. By dropping it, you see here, we have mechanicals to relocate. Has anyone ever been in that basement by chance?
Yes.
Uh, the sixteen-foot ceiling, it is scary looking, and it needs to be reinforced as it is now. The, uh, the post and beams on there are concerning, so we have to redo that. We have to, of course, reframe the floor, reframe the floor. There's mechanicals below it, literally attached to the ceiling, they need to be relocated. That aspect, I think we'll be able to do for around ninety-four thousand. That puts the room back, that doesn't include any cabinetry, anything by way of the bar. It's just to lower that floor. Looks like Jack's got the platform coming up soon.
And just for the public, the reason for lowering the floor is to make the space more, um, suitable for the business. Is that correct?
Not only for the business, but for the customer, for handicap accessibility. You don't have to take someone from dining, if you're dining in the back room, the private room, the room furthest east, and you need to use the facilities. You would have to take someone outside.
Right.
In an un-temperature, in a, in a non-temperature controlled area and use what they're calling now a restroom. We're, that's another thing, we're introducing two new restrooms. So to answer your question, it is for the logistics of the business, yes, but also to make it accessible and agreeable.
No matter the use.
No matter the use.
Thank you.
No matter the use, yes.
So in, um, the freight room, when we drop the floor, there's a door that goes currently, it's currently an exterior that would go into the platform room now.
Correct.
And we had talked at one point about removing the door and just having a doorway, is that still the plan?
That is still the plan if we can get the HVC to balance.
Okay.
Interesting question. Uh, there is now just an aluminum frame built sometime in the, in the eighties, I suppose. We want the experience to be that while you are in either room, you'll be able to experience both. So yes, we'll be removing that. But on beautiful days, as everybody would remember, we like that the window is open. But that means that that window open is not just to the outside, it's to the entire restaurant. So there is some HVC, uh, challenges to it. But we will be removing that aluminum door. We want that egress to be much wider, instead of just a thirty-six inch door, it'll end up being close to five feet.
So it'll widen, and then as you lower the floor, does it have to remove some of the building to deepen the...
The building.
Well, there's that door will already go that low.
Jack, will you be able to answer that better than I can?
We'll be lowering the door, the opening door.
That, yes, but as far as the, once you come through that first one, it'll be the same level.
Correct. I just didn't know if the building went that low.
The building does go that low.
I mean, the door frame of the building.
It does, currently.
But below, it goes sixteen feet.
Correct.
So if we need to notch it down eighteen and a half inches, we have ample walls to remove.
And that in turn would make that doorway look taller.
Correct.
Yes.
That room now is relatively high ceilings. When we drop the floor, it's all great, it won't be that much bigger. Next page, the kitchen. I mean, no disrespect, but what is there now is not a kitchen. Yeah, it's, it would not in any way, in no way should have ever passed inspections, and it wouldn't pass inspections. It wouldn't pass our inspections, not to our standards. If I'm not mistaken, that floor had some issues before, would have to be repaired. We're not fans of doing things with a floating joists. We are, and the building as it stands now is just a shanty building that they just jammed under it. Is everyone recalls? Were you able to show me something there? By way of three D of...
Uh, sure, the way I can show it out, it's going to look...
That's fine.
Is this the kitchen now?
Well, that's the entire layout, the kitchen's not depicted there.
Oh, okay.
No, I misspoke, that is the kitchen, that is the kitchen.
Center of right-hand side, freight room is down at the bottom left.
Right. Do you have a three D version of that, Jack?
So just to let everybody who is watching, the kitchen is not the original part of the station.
By no means.
An add-on back in the day.
And in fact, the way it's going to be correct. And furthermore, as it is now, if you take a look now, the new kitchen will then move away from the station. Whereas in now, that roof line that's coming on an angle towards the train station is jammed under. This way would separate it, pull back out some of it, Jack? And now that kitchen would be expanded and sit alone, full concrete, full floor, up to code, proper. Hopefully, it's under our use for the next few generations to come. But for whatever reason, then you have a real kitchen. And for the record, we're not asking for the kitchen, we're looking for the building. All equipment, all things are fitted out, are done, just give us the box. We'll put the sand in it.
And that box takes away still three parking spots or so, is that right?
I'm not sure if it's three or if it's two, I don't know. It will encroach.
Based on the, the new design for what we have for down there and how that parking lot's getting redone, there's four spaces that can eliminate.
Oh, four.
Four.
Is it what, two facing the building and the first two on the sides?
Well, how the parking lot's going to be redesigned, there's four parking spaces that are facing the building. Um, so basically, all of those would go away.
Apparently, how many would be taken out based on the current construction of it now?
The way it's currently laid out, you're losing at least... Actually, it's probably still more at night, because there's, there's, there's the two that are there, but it's also, um, you kind of encroach into that, where the, where the parking spaces face the tracks. You're getting close to those too, if we left it the way it is today.
Thank you.
Can we, I'd like to take everyone back into the, um, the platform, if we could, Jack? By way of three D preferably. There we go. So that, of course, is the, the platform side, showing the walls. The columns there are deliberately engineered so that the greatest amount of visual is still there for the tracks, the river, and all the other beauty. When you come in over the bridge, you can't very much see through that plastic tarp. Now you'll be able to see through the glass, you'll see the brick, you see all the braces, it'll look much better. So, now give me...
Windows are full accordion windows, so they open up completely all the way around, pushing to the inside.
And where is the, there's still stairs coming in the other side, so where is the ramp coming in? They're rolled up back.
The ramp is, is not, is still where it was.
It's still coming in the back.
Far east side, yes.
Okay.
There's another part there too that we want to obviously enclose. Go into that side right there, Jack, showing, yeah, right where you are.
Yeah.
So that also, as people are walking from over the bridge, they can see the building, that's the entrance. We're going to put a double door area there with big windows. Okay?
Dante, you had mentioned earlier that according to MHT, you can't have that platform roof attached to the original building. So the exterior of it is the structure, that's, that's what's going to be holding that structure.
We are building it so that, again, it does not even attach so much or rely on the...
It's in contact with.
Yeah.
It's in contact, of course, but it's not in any way supported by it.
But there's a way that you're able to shore it up, that you're not going to have any water issues.
Of course, of course, of course. Oh, that's being actually engineered now. MHT, because the amount of time that they took to preside, didn't allow my, our design team to say, well, we can do this, let's build it this way. We can't do this, let's build it that way. That's why we are in delay, we've been working diligently. Being at the Aldersburg location, I see a lot of the guessing, what's going on with Sykesville? Are you still doing it? They're thinking that for some reason, we may have lost interest or abandoned. Could be further from the case. There was a lot of time and energy being put forth, but now the expenditures are coming to light. And now if we can go to the summary page. And the summary page is asking, making the formal request, giving us everybody a timetable, where the building is in need, our investment is going to be well north of a million dollars. And again, we're talking still, not in consideration. Certain things that are hard to quantify, there's, there's drawings, there's permits, there's consultants, intangibles that are extraordinarily expensive and time-consuming. The kitchen equipment, the, the finishes, the light fixtures, the cabinetry, the bar top. It's a considerable investment. So we are here to make the formal request that the town help us in a collaborative, uh, car sharing of what is intrinsic to the building. At this juncture, it reads for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to be put towards the expenditures of the aforementioned, the buildings, these are that nature. And then give everyone a sense of timetable, when's it going to be open, when, when's it going to take place? We're, we're relatively close to submitting for building permits. We're close to having all our drawings done to submit for permitting. I am not certain how long the county's taking, but we're hoping somewhere in a forty-five day range for them to review and hopefully approve, so then we can start construction. Backing into it, our target date is somewhere in April, maybe Mother's Day would be the, hate to say worst-case scenario, but a date, that's when we want to be open by. The construction, we want to enclose it so we can start doing our finishing work by the winter months. That's a, a summary of what it's going to cost in the stages that they're going to be done and when we hope to be open.
Can we get an update on MHT and where that process is?
Oh, well, so again, they've given conceptual approval already. The only thing that still needs to happen with MHT is, once the, once the physical design is done, the engineering is done, so that they can show the specifics on materials and how things are going to attach and how construction methods are going to be done, that has to be resubmitted to MHT. But that's only a cursory review, um, it doesn't have to go through that same process that we just went through with, um, with the easement adjustment.
But not a, not a potential delay?
It, it shouldn't be, again, that's the, I don't, I don't know exactly, uh, you know, how they're going to treat it. The way they basically explained it to us was, you don't need another easement amendment, and that's what took so long the, the first time. This is just making sure that the construction that they're proposing matches with what was already approved.
It is the concept of that, that that would work in parallel while the county was reviewing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Same thing with all the town approvals too, you still need a site plan and, uh, local historic district approvals.
So on the state side of approvals, when we talk about once the structural things are done, the design of where the bar goes or where the refrigerator goes, or like, they're out of that at that point?
Correct.
It's just the, okay.
Yeah, that, that doesn't concern me.
Thank you, Dante.
Questions for me? Thank you all.
A pleasure.
Very much.
So I'll, I'll, I'll jump in and just say, so again, there are three basically actions that, that we're asking the council to do to take tonight. One is just a general overall approval, I know a lot of these improvements are things that have been talked about before at this body, it's just, uh, based on the lease agreement, uh, they have to be approved by council before he can technically move forward with building permit or any other permit requirements. Uh, so that would be the, the first action that we ask of council. The next is approval of the potential, uh, potential, uh, financial participation of the town uh, with these improvements, uh, as the mayor mentioned before, uh, roughly a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is already budgeted for in this, in current fiscal year. Um, the remainder, we do have options on where we could potentially pull money from if it is determined that, that we do want to participate with this, either through, uh, existing grants, which could, which could be reallocated, or just, uh, general revenues that we have in our unassigned fund balance.
So you, on the budgeting side, you feel like that, um, was it one, two, twenty-five? Is doable, it's not going to stress another...
Like an additional two hundred and twenty-five, uh, correct, yeah. I think we're, we're, we're okay with that as long as you combine it with what we're already allocating out of the ARPA fund.
Right, right, the additional, you feel like it within the budget lines that we have, you could...
Yes.
So let me ask that question differently, because in previous conversations, we were talking about other, uh, town expenditures. And so measuring this up with those other town expenditures, where do we sit?
So even if there is a, let's just say, a future land purchase that we're going to make, this, this participation was already factored into how that money's going to flow. So I guess, looking at what we currently have available to spend, we're, we're okay making that. Now, I wouldn't recommend anything else beyond that, uh, at least not at this time. But as we stand right now with what we have in our unencumbered fund, um, and again, if we can move grant monies around, that just frees up enough.
And the reason I'm asking that is because they're all sort of tied together to a certain effect. Okay, thank you.
So would the allocation of that money or the payment of that money be one lump sum? Or is that going to be in a payment plan?
It would, it would likely be structured or tiered in a way that, depending on how, how they proceed with construction, we'll, we'll pay quarterly or monthly or whatever, whatever we can work out.
So if it's not all in one lump sum, is there a way that maybe we can harness a grant to help us if we find something along the way?
Potentially, again, grant, grant funding's always an option on any of these projects. To me, it's always about timing, because typically grants, um, you know, you apply for them, you wait six months, and then maybe you get notice that, yeah, you got the award, and then you got to go through several other steps to get it. If there's a grant out there that we can apply for that would line up with the timeline, then great, we'll certainly do that.
And, and in actuality, the, there's already been a meeting that's taken place within the county and, and Dante's team and, and the town, um, to look into that kind of assistance through the county, if there is any, uh, through the economic development and/or commerce. Um, and their recommendations were for us to look at things we were already aware of, which we will be looking into, which is through the state and the HCD, um, and a couple different options there. So that's kind of already in our sights, but as Joe said, a lot of it comes down to when those grant cycles are open and when they're accepting, um, applications, and then when... open and when they're accepting, um, applications, and then when the money's actually needing to be spent, so. Um, but yes, that's all going to be considered, and that's a very good question.
And then this last motion, the towns or staff recommending in terms of the amendment, what does that include?
Yeah, so the, so there is obviously the, the amendment to the lease. So rather than starting the lease all over again, uh, given some of the changes in the timelines that, that we've looked at, we, we really wanna try to just clarify a few things. So one thing that we're adding is, basically from the effective date of the lease, which is December first, twenty twenty-three, uh, to July one of twenty twenty-five, we're basically just considering this entire timeframe or that entire timeframe as a construction period. Because again, we're not exactly sure when we'll be able to start construction. Uh, the hope is obviously Mother's Day of next year, but again, we wanted to build in a little bit of wiggle room in case, you know, timelines get, get tweaked again. So again, we just wanted to call that the, the general construction period, meaning that the, the actual lease, so when rent could then be charged, would, wouldn't even take effect until July one of twenty twenty-five. We've extended the abatement period, so we'd already included an abatement period in, in the existing lease for six months. We're basically extending that another year. So we wouldn't even have that opportunity, wouldn't even, uh, enforce a rent opportunity until July one, twenty twenty-six. That is when, uh, we've modified the section that talked about, uh, basically depending on what the investment of the tenant is into the building, uh, would dictate additional abatement as we kind of, uh, proceed through the, through the lease periods. Um, so we had originally approved, um, i- if there was a expenditure of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, we would agree to a three-year rent abatement period. Um, so we just kinda took that math and just extended it out for the life of the, the lease. So depending on how much is actually invested by the tenant, every fifty thousand dollars would equate to one year worth of abatement. So again, if they spend half a million dollars, it's ten years worth of abatement. Spend a million dollars, it's twenty, twenty years worth of abatement, et cetera. And it just basically just extends the entire time of, uh, of how we've structured the lease. We've also, again, because of the investment potential here, we've extended the term of the lease to basically make up all of that time if they spend over a million dollars. We didn't wanna say, okay, well, you're gonna spend a million dollars in the building, but we're only gonna allow the, the term of the lease to extend to fifteen years, and then we could potentially take it away from them. So we basically had to extend the, the term of the lease to that maximum of twenty-five years.
And what happens if, um, during that period of time, um, the tenant wants to leave? Putting hypothetical on the table, just as a in case, I wouldn't imagine that's probably what, what, what folks would wanna do, but who knows?
Yeah, there's, there's-
The future's unknown.
There's, there's no reimbursement provision in the lease, so it's like, once that investment's made, our contribution is the abatement. So again, if they decide to leave, then our loss.
Yeah, that's already covered in the original lease.
Okay.
Now, we've had leases in the past where the business doesn't fit our vision. Not that I ever would think that a amazing restaurant would ever not fit our vision, but in the event that there's something happens. So the only way to get out of this one, our end, is if there is a breach of the lease.
Correct. Yeah, so again, the, typically in the past, there hasn't been a potential investment of this magnitude in any of our product properties. So again, we, we knew when we were first negotiating this lease that we didn't wanna take it out twenty, twenty-five years. But again, given the, the financial contribution that the tenant is proposing, it just made good sense for us to do that. And again, we still have the same, uh, breach parameters that are in our other leases. Um, again, it was just, we, we were hoping to keep it, uh, I guess, the, the, the term window a little bit smaller. But again, given the investment, it, it makes sense to, to push it out a little bit further.
Is there a provision for them to sub leases to someone else, say, down where they don't wanna do it and they can they hand it over?
Okay. So again, all of that's required to come back to the town for approval.
So that would also then give us, make sure that we're-
That's already, we've already signed all that stuff. That's, we're already past all that point.
And initially, it wasn't that uh, the restaurant was gonna contribute, it was gonna be in phases.
You're right, it just, we weren't sure, we weren't sure exactly, well, one, we weren't sure exactly what the total investment was going to be or if it was gonna be phased out. So it was like, oh, for the first, the first construction period, it was only gonna be, say, the new kitchen or something along those lines, and then other improvements as the, uh, once they got open. Now it's very clear that they wanna-
We wanna do it all at once, make it counter answered. It makes sense in every aspect of cost timing. It's just six. Yes, is it getting half pregnant?
Which isn't a thing. Um, so I'm told. So, uh, are there any, uh, is there anyone at the table that would like to make, uh, any one of these motions?
Since we can't see Al, do we wanna give Al the opportunity to ask questions?
Is he still there?
Al, Al, are you still with us?
Yes, I am, uh, still with you. And Joe, uh, actually took a couple pictures and sent me the document and ran it out. So I've been pinging Joe on some questions, and I've been following the conversation. I'm, I'm good to go.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Um, so we are looking for a motion. Um, I, I'll read the motion out loud, and then someone can just, uh, copy. Uh, the first motion, uh, that is recommended by staff is to approve the proposed improvements to the station building as presented.
So moved.
Thank you, Council President Carter. Thank you, Councilman Keenan. Uh, and note that this approval does not waive any other required steps in the construction process, such as site plan approval, historic district commission approval, or building permit approvals, as we mentioned earlier. Is there any need for any further, well, does anyone have any further questions for the lessee, the lessee or staff regarding this?
May Mayor, I have one question. I maybe I listed, but this all got approved by Maryland State Historic.
Yes. Yes, the con, the, the, yeah, the conceptual, uh, plan, the concept itself, basically what we're looking at on the screen on all these three D renderings, uh, were, were approved by MHT as required.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions for staff?
No, but, uh, Al, just a clarification. Joe also mentioned earlier that we would run the final sign-off from MHT concurrently with the other approvals, and hopefully there would not be any delays in reference to that. I don't know if you picked up on that either, but that was also said a little bit ago.
Yes, I did. Thank you, Jeremiah, for your clarification.
Yep.
Okay. Any need for further debate on the motion on the table, which is to approve the proposed improvements to the station building as presented? Hearing that, I will call for the vote. Uh, all in favor of the motion to approve the proposed improvements, improvements to the station building as presented, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 I assume your hand is raised. I'll just take that for, take that in good faith, Councilman. Thank you. Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, so we have a unanimous approval of the motion to approve the proposed improvements to the station building as presented. Thank you, Stazion.
Thank you all.
Um, the next, um, the next recommendation by staff for a motion includes, um, a motion to, to approve the town's financial participation in the construction effort at the station in an amount not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, and direct staff to present the recommended financing plan at the next meeting on September twenty-third. Is there anyone that wants to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Keenan. That's the first. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Council President Carter. Uh, any questions regarding the motion on the table for staff or for, uh, I guess it would just be staff at this point? No? And no further debate necessary? Okay, hearing that, I will call for the vote on the-
So maybe, is there any point in us giving any direction to the town in reference to where we'd like the funding to come from?
So that's, that's a very good question, and I think just within the staff report itself, it did propose two options for us. Um, I mean, I can make those known now. We have an existing, uh, grant, um, through the HCD that is not all spent, um, that we could pull from. And, uh, as Joe had mentioned at least once earlier this evening, we have the, the unencumbered funds, um, six, uh, adequate, and then some for, for the, uh, to make up the difference between what was already budgeted at one fifty, one twenty-five.
One twenty-five.
One twenty-five. Thank you, Jeremiah. That was worthy of repeating. Um, any other, uh, everybody ready to vote on the motion? Here we go. Uh, all in favor, excuse me, of the motion to approve the town's financial participation in the construction effort at the station in an amount not to exceed three hundred fifty thousand dollars and direct staff to present the recommended financing plan at the September twenty-third council meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Excellent. Any opposed?
Aye.
I, I heard the aye. We're good, brother. Um, and that looks like, and sounds like it's a unanimous, uh, vote in favor of the motion. And the third and final recommendation, uh, by staff on this agenda item is that we uh, move to approve the first amendment, uh, assuming that, that, that's pretty presumptuous, was presumptive that there will be a second. But to approve the first amendment to lease agreement, uh, as presented. Anyone here wants to make that motion?
I can make, I said move.
Thank you, and that is, uh, made by Councilmember Geroff and seconded by Councilmember Schofield. I'm sure it's some, uh, nutritional value, I think, this, this evening.
It's all good. I forget my last name too sometimes. My wife wants to forget it.
Bob's a girl, isn't she? Yeah. Uh, so that's, that's the motion first and seconded. Uh, any questions for staff on this matter?
No questions, but there is a minor typo on page five on the signature line underneath tenant. It says, Stazion Inc., LLC. Just needs to be clarified.
Big Elaine, right?
Just covering my bases.
Yeah.
Thank you for that correction, sir.
We're adding fourth to it.
Yes. That's the moment we're missing. Um, so the motion, uh, to approve the first amendment to lease agreement as presented is on the table for vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, that's a aye for me as well, so that's a unanimous. No opposed, just for clarity's sake? Great. Um, that motion passes unanimously, as did the previous two, which I had not cappled in. Um, so that's all for that agenda item. You're free to go unless you wanna hang with us.
We're gonna do the honors.
That sounds good. That sounds great. Thanks for your hard work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate you, uh, putting that together for us. Good evening to you. All right, that moves us to down the line here, uh, to consider, discuss, and act on the award of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five paving contract. Goodness gracious, I feel like we just finished paving. Oh, wait, that's all we do in Sykesville. We're the pavers. Okay, so this item summary is as follows. The town's capital improvements plan identifies the resurfacing of various roadways within the town. This project will complete the repaving of Spout Hill Road, Village Road, 'cause I'm already getting like mess from people because Second Avenue got paved. Those that live on Springfield are like, oh, your street got paved. Well, guess what? So is the other one. Uh, and Obreck Road between Norris Avenue and the town boundary at Fairhaven Park. And Joe, I'll turn to you for any further background info, please.
So this is a little different than how we've handled this in the past. Uh, so typically, we usually, uh, bid all of our paving projects. Um, uh, I'll just, I'll give a shout out to CPE. Nine times out of ten, CPE is the winning bid, uh, when we do go out for, for bidding. However, our charter does allow for cooperative purchasing arrangements with other, uh, governmental entities. So basically, if there's a governmental entity that's already gone through the bidding process and awarded a paving bid or any other bid with, uh, to a contractor that, that we would like to, let's just call it piggyback on, uh, we have that capability of doing that. So recently, uh, Howard County, um, issued a on-call, uh, paving contract with CPE. Again, since it's a, it's a known company that we use regularly, and, uh, typically that's who we call anytime there's a, an issue or an emergency that comes up. Uh, and they've done most of our paving projects in the past, uh, we thought this was just an opportunity to say, okay, well, we can potentially skip that step and just jump right into the, uh, to the contract and get, get the work, uh, actually moving forward. Um, so that is what we are proposing tonight, is just approval of, uh, kinda piggybacking on the, the Howard County on-call paving, uh, bid. And go ahead and hire, uh, CPE to perform these, uh, these, this paving project for this fiscal year, which as the mayor said, is, uh, for Spout Hill Road, um, Village Road, and a portion of Obreck. Um, those costs are included in our, uh, general revenues for highway user revenue, what we expect to connect, uh, collect in highway user revenues for the current fiscal year. Uh, plus, if you recall, we actually didn't spend all of our highway user revenues last fiscal year, so there's a little bit of a carryover in case there is something uh, that pops up that, uh, either comes in a little over budget or be more likely, uh, it's gonna be sidewalk projects that we have down the road.
Which would be wonderful, unless we have another, um, sinkhole situation that we didn't expect.
Correct.
Yes.
Did CPE give us a pricing?
They, they did.
They agreed to. They, I'm sorry.
They, they, they did. So again, it is, it does match, uh, what the, uh, overall contract unit costs are with the, the Howard County, um, contract.
Okay, so that's what they were basing their estimated cost is on?
Right.
Costs per unit?
They did their takeoffs or their estimates, uh, on the linear footage of the roads and, you know, how much milling they're gonna be doing. So typically, um, depending on the type of roadway, so again, if it's a, I'll get nerdy for a second, if it's like a major collector, at least our version of what a major collector is, like Spout Hill or Obreck, um, you know, it's a, it's a little bit of a bigger overlay, so they'll mill down a little bit further and put a little more, uh, patch back in. Uh, whereas Village, because it's more of a, let's just call it a local road, uh, it doesn't get quite the same level. So again, that's why, uh, Village looks a little different than, say, Spout Hill. In the cost estimates.
Is there a map or a way we can clarify what part of Obreck and why are we doing just a portion of it versus?
Sure, yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, uh, I guess I should've mentioned that in, in the write-up. So some of the other portions of Obreck had already been done, uh, in the recent past, like within the last three to five years. Um, so rather than doing the whole section of roadway, we're only doing the one that really didn't get any attention of the previous paving projects.
Okay, which is from the county line back towards us until you get to Norris.
Right.
So going back to the Howard County cost or, or approved price, is that less than what we would have approved? I mean, their, their contracted price with Howard County, are we getting a deal or is it just even?
Well, again, I mean, if we had gone out to bid, I guess you just never know. Somebody might have come in, uh, quite a bit cheaper. But again, because it's a contractor we know and have worked with in the past, we're, that's why we were comfortable with doing it this way.
It's just a different process?
Correct.
Okay, got it.
But to piggyback on our question, it's within range of normal inflationary, yeah, it costs this, it costs this, but it's not like this.
If you look at previous paving projects that we've done, given the, I guess, what's called square footage of roadways or linear footage of roadways, it is in line with what we expect.
It's a reasonable lesson. Yes, okay.
Thank you for clarifying that for me.
I guess I'm still lost on what part of Obreck, like Nor, it says Nor, between Norris
Mm-hmm.
And the town boundary of Fairhaven.
What, Fairhaven Park, which is the baseball field?
Right, so we're not going the whole way around all the way to Harlan.
Correct.
It's a, it's a very-
Yeah, so there's a section, again, I mean, the road names all wrong, but it's basically from Fairhaven Park all the way to, say, Gaither Road is, is all county maintained.
So once you turn left, if you're coming from here and the, the road almost turns left with that entrance to-
To Fogals.
The Fogals, you're right.
Okay, so from Fogals over to Norris.
Correct.
Yeah, so it's a pretty small section of Obreck that we're gonna be.
Right.
And then for everyone's understanding, that's because we don't own from Fogals to Gaither, okay.
Okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Good, no, that was great. Um, anyone else? Any questions for staff? Okay, so, um, referring to the staff report, uh, staff's recommendation is that we move to approve the paving contract to CPE Incorporated uh, in the amount not to exceed two hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents to begin the paving project.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Schofield. Thank you, Councilman Dyer. Is there need for any further debate or questions? All right, if not, then I shall call for the vote. All in favor of the motion to approve the paving contract to CPE Incorporated in the amount not to exceed two seventy-nine five and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents to begin the paving project, please motion with the hand raised and say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All, uh, all, that's all. That's me too, so that's all of us. Any opposed for, uh, record-keeping purposes? Unanimously approve the motion. That brings us to our announcements and reports, which I'll begin with the following. The next meeting is scheduled for Monday, September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. We have volunteer opportunities available on the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Planning Commission, Crossing Guard, and Police Auxiliary. If you're interested in any of these, uh, positions or any volunteer opportunities for the, uh, for the town, please email town@sexville.net for more info. And that brings us to staff updates, and, um, we will begin with da, 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 public safety report with, uh, Sergeant Kilgore. Sergeant Kirchner. Thank you, sir. That hurt, didn't it?
That was a double shot at two different people.
That was a double shot at two different people.
He demoted?
That rolled still off the tongue, believe it or not. I don't know why.
You hit me with it, you hit him with it, like a motive.
It was more of a hitting him with it, because he's not here, but yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Sorry, we'll let it go.
Sergeant Kirchner, welcome.
Thank you, and this is my first time doing this, so please be gentle.
Well, I made it so that you would not, if you made a mistake, it's okay. I just told you by the wrong name, so.
So I was told that everybody has already received a public safety report, so I'm not going to bore everybody with a bunch of numbers. I'm just going to hit a couple bullet points, and if we have any questions at the end, I'll I'll try to answer them.
Appreciate it.
Um, community policing for this period, uh the Sykesville Police Department participated in the annual National Night Out on August sixth. Um, the event was well-attended. I know that night it was horrible thunderstorms, a horrible downpour. Lieutenant Kilgore suggested they all move it indoors. It was moved indoors, and apparently it went off with a complete success. Um those that attended it were Lieutenant Kilgore, Sergeant Lacy, Sergeant Schlereth, Corporal Barrett, Admin aide Prozick, and six members of the Auxiliary Unit all represented us for that National Night Out. Um, on August twentieth, the department partnered with the Carroll County Health Department to host a medication and Sharps Takeback Event here in the parking lot, and in two hours, they were able to collect over fifty pounds of unused medications in over two large boxes of Sharps, so they could be properly disposed of. So that was also a very uh successful event. Um that was attended by Chief Spalding, Lieutenant Kilgore, Sergeant Schlereth, Sergeant Lacy, Corporal Barrett, PFC Hoppa, and Auxiliary Lieutenant Queen. So they another large outing for our department for that community event as well. Um, another big thing, and Corporal Barrett put this together herself, she actually went to um the principal for the middle school last year to organize some things for some students, for some hu- community outreach programs. She organized some car washes and park cleanups, and she, those events were successes. I know a couple of the parks that I was able to get to while I was working, she had the kids out cleaning up the parks. It was South Branch Park, Obreck Park. I know she had a couple car washes going, one that were also a huge success, so huge shout-out to her for reaching out and seeing what was also needed. Also on that, she organized a uh for schools, supplies to be dropped off at the Sykesville Police Department for the first day of school, so that way if students needed anything, families couldn't afford to get it, we were able to provide it, so.
That makes me want to clap. No, it really does.
She deserves the recognition for that.
Kudos for sure.
Um, the fifteenth annual Sykesville Police Department Junior CSI Program is scheduled for September twenty-eighth this year. Um this year Sergeant Lacy has taken the lead role in organizing this worthwhile community event. Um right now, it's about half full, but that was right before the the school year started, so typically whenever the school year starts and they see the post for it, that's whenever we get more to sign up for it. But that's going to be coming up soon, and that's usually, like I said, that's usually pretty full, and we get a lot of good feedback from that. As stated, we had the first day of school, and because of that, the Sykesville Police Department had a large presence, just because it was the first day of school, a lot of parents dropping kids off, the school buses, people getting used to the school bus stops again, so we had a large presence that day. Um that day, Chief Spalding, Sergeant Lacy, Corporal Barrett, and several Auxiliary Officers were out to assist with traffic control, check the school bus stops, go into school, make our presence known, just to say hi to the kids, say hi to the faculty, make sure that they know that we're still around and we're there for them, so. Another successful first day of school for everybody.
Thank you, Sergeant. I also saw uh s- some supervision uh by the SPD at the corner of Spout and Second as well that afternoon, so I was appreciative of that and would love to see more of that.
We are trying. It's sometimes it's difficult, the way the schools let out, I know from doing the crossing in the afternoon with myself.
Yep.
The way the kids get out sporadically at the school.
You can't leave there to come up here.
To go over there, especially with the construction going on, but we are, we are making efforts to make sure that we can figure that out, so.
Appreciate it.
Yep. Um in regards to criminal cases, so June of last year, over at the Sykesville Apartments, we had an armed robbery where um the victims were a mother and her teenage son, held at gunpoint, robbed. Sergeant Lacy did an outstanding investigation, was able to ID the suspects, and in this past month, conviction on all wa- all counts by the jury.
That's fantastic.
Guilty on everything, so that individual is facing, because of his past, is facing up to twenty-five years no parole. So because of his uh outstanding work, outstanding investigative skills, took care of another case for us, so.
That's great.
Kudos to Sergeant Lacy on that. On to another, not so big of a case, but still a nuisance. Uh, over here at the Fountain Park, we've been having some issues with somebody's dog not being cleaned up after.
Somebody's dog?
Somebody's dog, so PFC Hoppa and PFC Jacobs were, they believe they identified the person that this was happening with, although they didn't, so they didn't cite him because they didn't see the dog doing anything, but they believe that he is the person that had to have been doing this, so they had a lengthy conversation with this person to make sure that this issue is resolved. So this person has been identified, we know where they live, we know the vehicle he drives, and he has been made well-aware of whatever consequences if he doesn't start cleaning up after his his dog, so.
Is it a town resident or?
Yes.
Town resident, yep.
An apartment resident on Main Street.
Yep. Yes.
Okay, that, there's a town.
Yep.
That's right there.
I, yes.
So he has been talked to by both of them.
Thank you.
He is well-aware.
And since they spoke to him, have there been any more incidents?
Not that I'm aware of. And actually Sergeant Schlereth, whenever we put out, he made sure that everybody knows, you know, especially with the newer officers, this is what the citation is, and this is how it's going to be worded, so that way it needs to go to the courts, so that way you just know ifs, ands, or buts, this is how it's going to go from here on out. So they are well-aware.
And the leash law in our po- in our parks is also, I'm sure, been reviewed with him? Because that that was also my, one of my great concerns as well, because I was observing the in and out of the apartment off the leash in to into the park, the Fountain Park.
And I might be mistaken on this, um it doesn't say that the dog has to be on a leash specifically, it just says in control of the owner.
Okay, and we're speaking of the ordinance about the public, uh about the parks.
I believe so. I can double-check on that just to make sure, but I I'm pretty, because I've looked at that several times, because I have some residents ask me about it, and I believe it just says as long as it's in control of the owner.
Yeah, we might need to revisit that ordinance. Because a dog's in control until the dog's not in control.
Right, and I agree with
I mean, the owner's in control of the dog until they're not in control.
It's starting to become a problem.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And I could, and I and I agree with you a hundred percent on that, because I do see people that, you know, their dogs do listen very well, but like you said, they're in control until they're not, so.
Till there's another dog that
Right.
Even on a leash might not be
Or a squirrel.
Friendly to other, or a squirrel.
Or bacon.
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 Thank you, Sergeant, I appreciate that update, because I've been wanting to hear that for a while. That's great.
Joe, is there a doggy receptacle at?
There, it's not in Fountain Park, it's across the street near the French Twist, just up on the French Twist, so it's within sightline.
At the corner
As well within sightline, and and a responsible pet owner should be taking
Oh, it's on the corner, okay, it's it's on Norwood and Obreck, okay.
Uh Oklahoma.
Oklahoma, thank you.
You have to go up a slight hill, like it's a very It's not much, but it is, it's a slight, I don't know. I don't know if that's the issue.
And it's a street.
It's a grade.
Fountain Park's a small park, you didn't want that right in.
I just wasn't sure if, because I don't remember it being in the park, but now that you mentioned where it is, I was like, oh, I know exactly where it is. As a former dog walker, I'd walk my dog when I knew that there would be receptacles.
It was this behavior that led us to put the disposal or the uh depository uh in the in the location that, yeah, within walking distance, so.
So we can look at reviewing the
Absolutely.
I watched him put pen to paper before I even opened my mouth. Good deal.
Okay, um administratively, uh Sergeant Schlereth, with assistance from uh Auxiliary Lieutenant Queen, submitted lengthy and detailed grant applications through the state of Maryland. Um with that, the Police Accounting, Community, and Transparency, the PAC grant, we did it, we were approved for it
Wonderful.
In the amount of twenty thousand five hundred dollars. So that's going to go towards um our annual subscription fees for WatchGuard cameras, annual fees for IA Pro, our internal investigative tracking system, annual fees for our mental health and physical fitness assess- assessments. Um, I do, we're going to look into also possibly, uh I just received an email about extending our warranties for WatchGuard as well, so that way if we do have something go down, set it by new, it's all under warranty still, so that'll be covered under this as well.
Wonderful.
And those items are not cheap, so.
No, they are not. Send the check signer.
And the last thing I have in regards to administrative uh vehicles, so I do, we just received an email today that our two new vehicles should be delivered next week.
That's great.
So, once we get them, and I have a few things that I need to do with it, uh I need to install the dash cams and the radars, and then we'll get Shannon Bombs to get them get them wrapped, and then they'll be on the road.
Fantastic.
What type of vehicles?
Uh twenty twenty-three Dodge Durangos. So.
Twenty twenty, okay.
Yeah, that's or twenty-three or twenty-four, I can't remember. I gotta look at the date that they were ordered to say which number we had.
They're new vehicles.
Brand-new vehicles, yes. Yeah, we were just having, once they were ordered, we had to wait for equipment to get, them to be built and then equipment to come in, for them to be outfitted. Now that they're complete, they'll come down to us to finish up, so they'll be out on the road soon.
Sergeant Kirchner, thanks for doing the uh the manual work on those as you always do with your, the installation of the cameras and such.
No worries.
Yeah.
Yep, it saves a little bit. We can put that money towards other better things, so.
I appreciate you.
Yep. And then um the auxiliary vehicle that was purchased from the sheriff's office, um that is almost ready to be on the road. Um, we are just waiting on a couple more things to come in to basically close up the center console. Lieutenant Queen, I will give him all the credit in the world. That man spent a lot of time, I don't know where he gets the time to do these things. He educated himself and installed all the waiting package himself. So instead of have, and I do know from dealing with some of these outfitters for our personal, for our other police cars, it's not cheap and it's not easy, and I've seen the wiring that needs to be done. So for him to take the time, you know, to do this, like I said, he is, you guys know he's a volunteer, he's got a full-time job, he's got a family, but he still takes time to get that stuff taken care of for us, so I just want to give a kudos to Lieutenant uh Queen as well.
We call that a psych-out around here. That's a psych-out instead of a shout-out. Lieutenant Queen.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
So that's all I have for the public safety report. Does anybody have any questions?
I don't.
I don't.
Pile on, some kudos for uh Lieutenant Queen. He also uh unclogged a toilet on Sunday at the farmer's market, so again. Very very much appreciate
Go above and beyond.
Many talents.
And then he ships off uh soon, so.
Yes, we're going to be, we're going to be losing him again for a few months, actually, probably like six, eight months.
He's in reserves, I think, I should remember.
I think he's, I think he's out in November.
I believe so.
So we've already, we've already asked him to come do one more update to council before he ships out, so everybody will have an opportunity to to see him and say thank you one more time before he's out of here for a little bit.
Awesome, thank you.
But he plans on coming back, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, he is coming back. We we don't, we didn't give him an option, so.
It was a pinky swear. Yeah, thank you, Sergeant, I appreciate you. That's Sergeant Kirchner, everyone.
And nice job.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, because I know this was a last-minute ask of you, so I appreciate you.
Good experience.
Alright, good deal. And our treasurer's report from our treasurer, Mr. Craig.
Craig.
The second time you come, though, it's harder.
It's harder and harder.
Thanks, Harvey. Doing a great job. Your first time, you're rookie, you did a great job, and then where I do, it's like
Craig, can you just hold one second? Sergeant Kirchner, can you please pass a thank you and a uh uh ingratitude from the council and the mayor to to Officer Blonde for introducing himself and taking that initiative to go up and down Main Street and introduce himself as the new officer to the to the business owners?
Absolutely.
I appreciate that very, very much.
Absolutely.
Very good. Okay, thank you.
No problem. Um, at this time, I like to present the August treasurer's report. Uh obviously, we didn't do it July, uh due to various reasons. Obviously, August catches us up in two months' worth, so um I don't know if you guys had a chance to look at it, I mean, there was a lot of volume, especially with the check register giving it, it was two months, I know. I apologize for that. Um, in terms of the balance sheet, I want to quickly point out, since Carrie got that up there for me, the bank accounts themselves, they were down to ten. They used to be almost twenty, but Joe and I decided some of them just didn't make sense. I mean, we were like, I'm reconciling account that it just, I was wasting a lot of time and energy. Why, you know, have money in a little Sykes Bank account, an HTC Bank account, and Gatehouse Bank account, because I mean, that's the kind of stuff you write checks out of. I mean, that's just another bank account hanging out there that somebody could like, you know, get their hands on, so we've managed to obviously cut them basically in half.
Yeah, I appreciate the consolidation.
Maybe, you know, there might be tweaks. If it actually goes away, maybe.
Or it won't actually go. Because we spend it.
That's right.
It's not a good thing, but
If somebody wants to keep feeding it, we'll we'll spend it.
Uh, so I don't know if you look at the bottom line of the income statement, as I call it, um you can see the expenditures obviously exceed the revenues right now by a great deal, about three forty-three. Um, the major reason for that is the real estate taxes. We usually get them around in August. But for some reason, Carroll County is evidently behind in distributing the monies um to all jurisdictions, it's just not us, so obviously, if it had gotten that in, we wouldn't have an issue right now in terms of the the budget, it'd be very close. Uh, we did get the town uh county agreement monies, which was nice. We always get that this time of year, so they were right on time again, so no complaints there, that kind of helped a little bit. Uh also, we also, on the expenditure side, some of the insurances, their annual insurances, like the general li- liability and the workman's cop, you had to pay them upfront, it's about a hundred thousand dollars, you know, once they're paid, you know, we don't have to pay them again the rest of this year, so that's added to the deficit right now. Just throwing that out there. Uh in terms of the check register, I know, again, there was a lot of activity, apologize for that. Um, but the biggies, I won't go over, obviously, every dollar amount, but obviously, the Ben &amp; Stock Natural Playground, we got the paid the last installment of that. I think the equipment has arrived from what I'm told. Haven't installed it yet, but it's it's waiting, so we've got that.
Somebody's um ring doorbell. Is that Al?
That is the lawyer for the court session.
Oh, can you please, can you please let her in?
I'm trying to be unintrusive.
No, 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 Al, it's not you. It's not you, and you are being so unintrusive this evening. I mean, so unintrusive.
Al needs to talk to him more often.
Aw, we love you, Al.
Uh, so the other ones, CPE, as we talked about earlier, uh obviously paving of Central, Ashbrook, First and Second, Avenue College, and Cooper Drive, obviously. That was a hundred thirty-nine thousand, that was in there. Legal bills, we won't go into that too much. KCI for the uh fees for the South End Street Escape, about seventeen. Uh we have a small Restito auto body situation, repairing the F-150. Uh, obviously, he was hit with a deer, as everyone knows. Evidently, the deer was caught speeding, and he wasn't happy, and he ran into
Focus matters.
Yes, the 150, so, you know, what are you going to do? But the insurance covered that, so it wasn't an out-of-pocket type of expense, so.
We'll be reimbursed for that, correct?
We were reimbursed for that already, so it wasn't a problem. And then Tennessee Corp., which did all the striping in all those parking lots around here, did a great job.
They did do a nice job.
Pretty cool. You know, the lettering over you guys at Wey, that was pretty cool, so. Um, other than that, the income statement was missing the percentages in my haste on Friday, I've come out and omitted it on the print, so, but what I'll do is when it goes up into the website, the actual August treasure report, I'll revise that and put, so everyone can, if you want to look at it again, it'll be on the webpage for you to all to see, so if you need the percentages to to do any calculations of yourself, it'll be there. So, other than that, there's one of four left. Always can.
Wow, Craig's really like, look, did you see him just like cross off his his treasurer's report?
I am out of here. I was wondering if those notches on the podium were four.
Joe, I do have a question. Um, two months in, we're already a third of the way through on legal fees, budgeted.
Yeah.
Sure you're preparing for that?
We we are. There again, it's it's one of those that we, you know, we put a number in there hoping that we can be within that range, but with with court cases ongoing, it's like you just never know exactly what that's going to end up being, so.
So do I have one question under the professional fees too. So quickly, and we're overspent on insurance, is that right? Am I reading that right?
It's the line
The general liability, is there another The general liability. Is there another payment, or is that?
That was it, we're over.
We'll have to adjust the budget accordingly.
Sometimes it's hard to know.
No, it's fine, I just wasn't sure since it was so early that we were over, if it was like an annual fee or if there were.
Any other questions for the treasurer? Thank you very much, Craig.
No, thank you, for now, to be able to do that.
As usual, very.
Thanks Craig.
That was coming, look, I paused just for Al. Um, so that brings us to the final item on our agenda this evening, which is, uh, our closed session. And.
Council.
Council reports.
Oh my goodness gracious. Craig, you put me in such a mood when you said you only had three left.
Sorry, that was unnecessary, Michael.
I'm kind of like really beside myself. All right, let's start, let's start with, uh, Councilman Keenan and, uh, the Downtown Sexual Connection Liaison Report, please.
Thank you. Uh, not much, but, um, composting workshop, the final one is scheduled for September eighteenth at the townhouse. Uh, they'll be summarizing the summer program and including a presentation on school composting initiatives. There's also a, um, the Carroll County Environmental Advisory Council invited troop twelve ninety to present a session on food waste management at their environmental symposium in August at the Ag Center.
That's awesome.
The, uh, preservation series, which I have not yet had a chance to get to, but I'm gonna hopefully get to the third session, which will be, um, at the townhouse here on September twenty-first of twenty twenty-four, uh, led by Fred Gosage. Jedi Committee is hosting a Bring Your Own Buddy mixer to expand membership and perspectives at their next regular meeting on September seventeenth at six-thirty at Barrier Free. Uh, golf tournament was apparently a great success, um, joined by police chief and his officers. Mayor Link, uh, Councilman Schofield, and Al Grassley were apparently hitting balls into the woods, and.
I wasn't, just those last two, three. The boys were doing that. I lost zero balls.
And, uh, a lively auction was apparently led by Mayor Link.
Oh, it's the truth, it hurts, I know, guys.
Upcoming events, we've got the Fall Festival on October nineteenth, twelve to four, features a circus school, magicians, and more. Uh, it's fun for the entire family and free of charge. Trick or Treat on October twenty-sixth from four to six, and the Craft Beer Festival on November second. Tickets are now available on the website and social media, and as always, tickets are limited. And as always, we also need volunteers for these events as well, so you can go to the website and log in to volunteer. Brands finally, uh, we've got two seventy-six eleven Main Street project. We've begun at activating the restore funds for that demolition is complete, renovation work will be ramping up. And the DSC was also awarded another fifteen thousand in a technical assistant grant for FYI twenty-four, twenty-five.
So I just have one correction to your announcements, Councilman Keenan. I know you said the date September twenty-third for the next, um, history, uh, historic preservation series, that's the correct date, is that what you said?
September twenty-first.
September twenty-first, except the topic is actually the creation of the historic district, and, um, that will be presented by former mayor Jonathan Herman and our chair of the current historic district commission, I'm sorry?
Chad Podirka.
Yes, Chad Podirka, yeah, I thought I had said something wrong again. Anyway.
It's at three P M.
That's at three P M on Saturday, and that, it will be here.
Got it, I read that wrong, cause Fred led the.
Was the last one, yeah, and this is the fourth and final one coming up. Thank you, appreciate you.
Thanks.
Um, Parks and Rec.
Parks and Rec, so, uh, music in the park last week, a movie, um, on the fourteenth. Cleanup on the twenty-first. Do we have a part, are we?
Cooper.
Are we at Cooper? Okay. And then, uh, music again on the twenty-eighth. Next park meeting is the twenty-sixth of this month.
Which movie is coming up?
Super Mario Brothers.
The band on Saturday at Cooper Park was really good. Um, I'm gonna turn to our chair in the audience of, of the, uh, Sykesville Parks and Recreation Commission and ask her the name of the band, cause now I can't think of it.
Here till Sunday.
Here till Sunday, yeah, that's actually really cool. It's like my job, like I'm here all week, right, till Sunday. Anyway, they were great, so, um, it was a fun event, so everybody catch the, uh, Super Mario Brothers movie.
Uh, the next planning commission meeting is on October seventh, there was not one in the month of September. And then, uh, going back to earlier in the meeting, I just wanna highlight something for any of the kids who might be watching out there. Um, what happened today was another example of when local government works. Um, where you have private-public partnerships, it doesn't happen in all forms of government as eloquently as what, uh, we've been able to do, uh, with, uh, what we're doing here in order to sort of make our downtown even better than it is. And I just wanna point it out for the kids who might be watching.
Here, here, brother.
Hey, the Girl Scout troop here, right?
Yep, no, that's for real, yep.
Councilman Schofield, you had mentioned that there wasn't a meeting in the month of September, did you mean the month?
September.
Yeah, did you mean the month of August?
Are we in the month of August? I thought we were in the month of September.
Did you have?
There wasn't, and there wasn't one in the month of September.
Well, this is September ninth, and it should have been.
Cause it's only the fourth day, that's not a.
No, that's been the last.
Okay, yeah. This month, okay, I got confused. I'm like, we're in September, and it's the beginning of September, I didn't realize.
It was last, last Monday, we did not have a meeting, because there wasn't, um, there wasn't enough information to move on some other projects. We would have moved to the third.
To the third, and it was canceled.
It didn't happen on that day, but.
I was confused, thank you for clarifying.
We might, we may, and very likely will have one on October seventh, so I wanna make sure people are aware.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Schofield. Councilman Dyre.
The, um, summer, uh, cable commission meeting was canceled, which is always a good sign, that means there's no turmoil. But on the positive side, in, in addition to getting a, um, a map of what will be wired and in what order, uh, the local residents started getting something from Flight Cable saying, we're not joking, we're coming, and get ready, and, um, click on this QR code, and maybe you'll, uh, see something you like, so it's, it's real now.
Yeah, I was pleased to see that.
High-speed internet is coming.
And then, uh, within that letter, they, they noted that there'll be, um, more communication directly from them.
Yep.
Prior to any kind of digging, and Joe's gonna also share that the town will participate.
So there's, there's information, uh, live on our website now, that kinda shows the, the overall plan. Uh, we'll be updating that when they send us the specific streets they're gonna be working on, so again, we'll have those listed on our website uh, as well, as better fact, they just gave us an update today, it looks like they're gonna start on the sixteenth. We thought they were gonna start in kind of the center of town and start to branch out from there, but it looks like they're gonna be in the Warfield area first, and then, uh, branch out this way, so.
Makes sense.
Stay tuned, or if you want information.
You must have a hub over there, then, that's, that's great.
Fantastic. And by the way, uh, Councilman Dyre, good work on the communication on the front end of that with them and, and with, with staff, I appreciate you. Yeah.
Just glad to help.
Yeah. Um, okay, now can I say that we got to the place where we're gonna close shop? Okay, great, so the next item on our agenda is closed session, that meeting is proposed to be enclosed pursuant to the general provisions article of the annotated code of Maryland, section three dash three oh five, part B. Number one, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation, removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction. We'll be talking about Joe. Or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, and to eight, consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation. Uh, the first, as I mentioned, is the town manager performance evaluation, confidential personnel information, personnel information, and pending litigation with Warfield. Um, I'll now call for a five-minute recess so that we can clear the council chambers in prep for us to return briefly into open session to, uh, call for close. Okay, thank you. Thanks for everybody coming. Recess, four minutes.
Three.
Three minutes.